Okay, guys, welcome to the City Council, February 23rd, 7:00 PM. Let's get this going. We're gonna recognize groups or individuals. Anybody wanna... So crowded out there. Receive input from the public, bids, contracts, proposals. Number four, the HRB, DIB are planning zoning recommendations. I'm going to split those. I'm not gonna do it as a... That's all. We'll just do number one, which would be the COA 1603 Brenda Hagan, 210 South Fish Street.
The recommendation is denial to remove the historic chimney with the recommendation that the chimney be repaired. If it cannot be repaired, it should be rebuilt.
I'll entertain a motion regarding the HRB recommendation.
I make a motion to accept the HRB, COA 1603, as recommended by the HRB.
I have a motion on the floor. Councilman Williams, I have a second.
Second.
Second, by Councilman Buckman. Discussion, please. All in favor, or the motion on the floor is to accept the recommendation for the HRB, COA 16-03 Brenda Hagan of 2010 South Fish Street. All in favor? Those opposed?
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself. From both.
So we have five eyes, one recues. Councilman Hagan recues. Motion's adopted. Okay. Let's go to COA 16-04.
Mayor, I'm gonna excuse myself from the room. I'm an executive member of that...
Okay.
Postboard.
Me me.
Who got supposed to wear this? You were... Larry.
COA 1604 Richard Ness applicant, O'Kentucky Home, American Legion Post 121. Owners propose to install a retired U.S. flag box at 206 West Broadway Street. The recommendation, approval of the installation of the U.S. flag box with the condition that the final design be submitted to the preservation coordinator.
Mayor, I make a motion to be approved, COA 16-04.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Hagan.
Second.
Second by Bobby Simpson.
No, Congressman Copeland.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Copeland.
I was looking at him. Okay. Discussion? Discussion? For the people that don't know, that's a box where people can put their flag to have it properly disposed of. For the general public, there is a proper way, instead of just wadding the American flag up and throwing it in the trash can or whatever, there's a proper way in an actual ceremony to destroy that flag. So, to let you know, that's what that's about. So we have a... All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five to zero.
Motion's adopted. Five to zero. The St. John AME Zion Church Parade. I'll entertain a motion regarding the church parade request. Some move. Motion on the floor by Councilman Lidian.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Williams.
And that's obviously to approve their request.
Correct. Discussion?
Again.
Yes, discussion.
Okay, so they'll go through the normal criteria that everybody else goes through and they have K rounds or whatever, where they... Or what will they have to do, Mayor?
Well, what's... I have to, first of all, they have to... The directions that they give, I don't think they're quite right, so I'm gonna ask if they would come up to City Hall and I can help with their directions and the path. I think they wanted to... Got a little messed up there, but we can overcome that. And then, there is a question of the time in the day that they want to have the parade. There's a question on that, and I'm looking into that. But after they seek that, they seek the permission of the state...
Enclosure permits.
Enclosure permits. They have to have those. They have to bring all those to me, then I will sign those, just like the Christmas parade. The other thing is, I read on there that they will be doing blocking the streets themselves. That Kentucky League of Cities and the risk manager will not allow that. They have to have law enforcement to do that. It's no different than allowing the firefighters to stand up in middle street and collect money. We don't allow that anymore, so they have to contract off-duty officers to actually work traffic control. There can't be civilians to stop traffic. So he has to come up with a plan for that and will probably... Chief, who's in charge of that? Is that Officer Blair still doing the off-duty thing?
Yeah.
So they'll have to get... When I meet with him, I'll tell him to discuss that with Officer Blair about the off-duty officers performing work, and of course, they will have to pay for that themselves to perform that. And after that, after I get all that information, then we'll move forward, and this is just approved against the... The... But yet, we'll have to have another reading and approve where it could go through the route and do all that. But I gotta make sure he has all the permits and stuff about first. Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the St. John AME Zion Church Parade. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Review of the minutes, City Council meeting, 29, 2016. If there's no objection, I'll adopt a motion by unanimous. Go ahead.
Objection.
Uh-huh.
I have objection on 2916 minutes. I'm gonna read a couple sentences, some language in a sentence. Councilman Lidian addressed the issue of the congestion on Highway US 62 and 31E to the mayor. Mayor Royalty reported that this would... This road plan has not been prioritized. For information received from Lisbon Town Department of Transportation, this project has not been pushed ahead of other projects. We need to correct this or strike it. At our meeting, 2916, Mayor Spaulin, I mean Mayor Royalty, you indicated to me that you contacted state, and state indicated to you that they was not gonna do anything, and they wasn't gonna do anything because of the budget, they was gonna cut the budget. So some language in here that you did not report to me or to the council. This is altogether different language. You did not indicate that.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Mr. Lidian, what would you like the minutes to say?
Well, this is incorrect information. You can review the tape. The tape did not indicate this language in the minutes that you reported to me or to the council, Mayor. You indicated, I issued a question about this congestion error, and you indicated, you said the state wasn't gonna do anything, they were gonna cut the budget. And I asked you, their philosophy, was their philosophy more important than some little child getting hurt or something?
Hold on, the philosophy is not, is what is...
I know, Bobby, I'm going back to what I said, because you did not indicate anything in this language, Mayor. You did not indicate nothing about this before.
And Mr. Lidian, what would you like the minutes to report?
I would like for you to review the tape and put in there what the mayor said and what I said.
Okay. Of course, these are not my minutes, and I'll certainly be glad to go back and review those.
Because we either gonna have to strike this or correct or put in there what the mayor's indicating, put in there what I indicated, because the language in this minutes here...
Then would you like to table the minutes until the next meeting?
Yes.
Would you like to make that motion, sir?
I'll make a motion to table the minutes to correct the minutes.
In the meeting that we had prior to, way prior to this...
Excuse me, Mayor. There's a motion on the floor, and we'll need a second, please.
Yeah. Motion on the floor to table the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Then you can have a discussion, sir.
Discussion.
My thoughts are, if we have these minutes over a week, if we... If one of us wished to make a change to the minutes, I suggest, I have the floor, I suggest that that councilman come to the meeting prepared with the verbiage that he wishes to see in the minutes. It's not... It's... We're shirking our duty if we say we don't like the minutes and tell somebody to rewrite them. If we wish to see something in the minutes, we should come to the meeting with that verbiage and make a motion to include that in the minutes. We can't just say, "We don't like it, rewrite." That's my...
Let me indicate to you, Councilman Hagan, I have my rights. I don't have to ask questions before the meeting. I have my rights to ask questions at this meeting, okay? And I have a question, I have a concern about that, so the language in it, that's it.
All right, let me follow up with Councilman Hagan. Ladies and gentlemen, you get these minutes, you get your information way ahead of time, and I cannot, in my time that I've been on the council, that you do not have the time to come to City Hall to voice these concerns and that you want to do this in a public forum to sit up on, at your podium and preach out, and this should have, it could have been taken care of beforehand, and you could have asked a request of the minutes, or you could have sat and listened to the tape, and nothing is done until the minutes, because you want to set up your pulpit and preach. I think it's wrong. With that being said, excuse me, just one minute. With that being said, the prior meeting that we had on this, I told you I'd get back with you, and that I did in the meeting here, that the state is not gonna do anything with that 62 and 31 East South interchange there in front of St. John's Church. That has been discussed since I've been in 2005 when Dixie Hicks was mayor. It's been discussed and tabled, discussed and tabled, thrown in the trash can, brought back out and discussed again. It's not, nothing gonna happen. They're not gonna do anything right now.
I have no problem with that, Mayor.
Well, that's what the minute...
Let me comment, I have no problem, but if you had reported what you... I mean, what's indicated in the minutes, I wouldn't have any problem with that. But the way you indicated, they weren't gonna do anything, they gonna cut the budget, I mean, that wasn't proper, and you...
I think that's what I said, Councilman.
And you approved the minutes, and you had to read the minutes, and you know you didn't indicate this language in the minutes.
Okay, let's move on.
We have a first and a second.
We have a first and a second. Discussion is over. We have a first and a second to table. All in favor? Those opposed?
Wait a minute, I have your own favor, sir.
All in favor?
How many do I have? I don't, I can't tell.
All in favor to table?
The minutes.
The minutes.
I see a hand, please. Could I see hands? One, two.
Those opposed to table the minutes? One, two, three, four. Motion, Councilman Lidian, your motion is denied. The minutes are...
No, we need to go back and accept the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of 29, 216.
I'll second it.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Hagan, second by Councilman Buckman. All in favor? Those opposed?
No opposed.
Councilman Copeland?
What?
Councilman Hagan, you got a vote on this?
Councilman Hagan's focused.
I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Copeland, Councilman Lidian, oppose the motion or you...
I oppose the motion.
Yes, two votes.
Yeah, two votes.
I still have a question. I'm not a city attorney. If the minutes are not true facts minutes, review the tape, and review the tape, and nothing on the tape to indicate that, this is arbitrary.
Well, the minutes aren't a verbatim transcript, so they're supposed to indicate the general tenor and content of what the discussion was, or, you know, obviously, then if you don't do that, you have a verbatim transcript which would be unwieldy, but, I mean, what I would suggest doing is coming back and listening to the minutes. Honestly, I don't think that they're... I don't think that they were deceptive in any way, shape or form, that they deceived in terms of what the mayor said, but you might wanna go back through, and there is a tape of it, and review the tape, and maybe Barbie can help you out with that and see what it says.
Paul Ricus, I'm gonna request a copy of the tape.
Second. You want me to send it to you or...
And I'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Again, Councilman, my door's open, and I'm up there sometimes for seven at night. Come by, that's all you have to... And you'll, and I'll sit in the classroom.
Let me excuse you.
Let's continue on. We're gonna end this discussion as Presiding Officer, I'm ending this discussion. I'm over this. Let's move forward. Let's go to the... There's nothing on the financial report. Ordances? Let's go to the first reading of the B.
Can we go to the second?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I see that, where you give me that. I'm sorry. Let's do number eight, B, the second reading of B 2016-02, the classification compensation plan, this will be the second reading, has been withdrawn.
Yes, sir. I didn't know if anyone had any questions in regard to the request to withdraw, withdraw the second reading on that classification and compensation plan. I had hoped that my email would be explained, would be able to explain the situation. Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Okay. We can go to the first reading.
B 2016, the amended budget FY 2015-16.
Mayor, I would like to introduce the proposal ordinance B 2016 amended budget for the year 2015-16, and ask for it to be read in full.
An ordinance amending ordinance number B 2015-15, the City of Bardstown's annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1st 2015 through June 30th 2016, whereas an annual budget for fiscal year 2015-2016 was adopted by the City Council of the City of Bardstown on June 23rd 2015, and whereas there have been unanticipated changes in both revenues and expenditure during the months of July 2015 through January 2016. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Bardstown, Kentucky that Section 1, the annual budget for the fiscal year 1516B and is hereby amended as follows. Number 1, general fund administration, increase expense line 10-0100-7100 by $15,144.66 and transfer in from unrestricted reserves, revenue line 10-0100-4990, $15,144.66 to cover the cost of expanding the parking lot in front of City Hall. Number 2, general fund recreation, revenue line 10-0300-4490 decreased by $100,000 and transfer in from unrestricted reserves, revenue line 10-0100-4990, $100,000 to cover the revenue Nelson County Fiscal Court is not giving for recreation support. Number 3, general fund police, decrease expense line 10-0200-7220 by $30,000 and increase expense line 10-0200-5320 by $30,000 in order to, excuse me, for police body cameras that are not considered technical equipment. Number 4, general fund COBEC building, increase revenue line 10-0500-4990 by $20,000 and increase expense line 10-0500-5520 by $20,000 to cover cost of repairing building to lease to the St. Vincent de Paul's Food Pantry Program. Number 5, combined utilities garbage, decrease expense line 42-0500-7220 by $185,000 and increase expense line 42-0500-5320 by $185,000. New dumpsters are not considered technical equipment. Under Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
I have a hangup.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a comment on five amendments. My comments related to the amendments expenses. I am against, I oppose some of those amendments. I'm gonna comment on all five, and once I complete my comment, you can question me or have a comment. Five comments total, expense, five that the clerk just read, five of them. $350,000, $144.66 to the budget. With the big chunk out of reserve to fund the full-time park department, plus is $350, made a total of $49,643,523.66, expense budget for 2015 and 2016. Number 1, Recreation Department, $100,000 deficit, reason caused by the separation. I missed one. Number 1 could have been delayed, that's parking lot, and I just indicated 2. Number 3, I'll support police body camera, $30,000. I'm gonna make a recommendation to the council that we have, the council and the mayor have $20,000 in continued fund, we can use some of those funds to help support and fund the body camera. So I'll support the police body camera. Number 4, I support COVEC building, $20,000. Number 5, I have some question, $185,000 new dumpsters, how many dumpsters and what is the reason for the new dumpsters?
Councilman Lidian, Tracy won't do that, but we've already bought the... We've already bought the dumpsters, we've already bought the body cams, of which I think the council had voted for on all this. You just voted here last week to give the $20,000 to the COBEC building, you've already voted for that. I don't... We're not voting on giving this money, you have already voted in favor of giving all that already, so I'll let Tracy have that.
Well, I didn't prepare the budget, but I did get to go through the audit last year, and I learned that after you complete your audit, or before the year-end, you're supposed to clean up your budget. And so I learned that technical equipment and technical supplies were two different things, and so basically, the number 5 and number 3 for the police, we're just changing the line items is all that we're doing. Those are already approved in the budget for this year.
Right, but $100,000 was not approved anyway, right? Now, the deficit in Recreation Department, $100,000, that was not approved.
There was already a deficit of, I think it was...
No, I'm... I indicated the $100,000 deficit in Recreation Department, that has not been approved.
No, all I did was take it, the amendment takes out the support from Nelson County because we're not getting it, and so then we have to put the money back in there to balance the budget, and that has to come from the results.
I thought it was on the review, all its fact, and from what I understand, the mayor indicated that expense would decrease with the separation.
They will, but we won't be able to see those decreasing expenses until FY 17 with the new budget.
Point now?
When we start the new budget process.
Yes.
Those, my understanding was that we could see the foreseeable, the foreseeable future would show a decrease in expenses in the recreation department.
Donna, Ms. Donna is here, and she can explain what time we're spending and what they, what they're doing now, so if you wanna talk to her, she's here to answer your questions if you have to... Because now we're spending, instead of not spending any time working on city recreation time or city recreation properties or anything, we were spending 100% of our time at Dean Watson's Field, so if you're...
I don't wanna hear, I need some numbers, do the math. All that's verbal talk, I don't wanna listen to it. If you give me something in writing, and I'll listen to it. If you give me a lot of verbal stuff, I'm not gonna listen to it, because it's just in one word, method, flow.
Well, we'll provide you with the numbers when...
Give me some numbers. Instead of just speaking verbal, I can speak all night verbal, and you won't have no facts.
Okay, well, give me, tell me what numbers you want, and I'll give them to you.
Some facts, you indicated that we were gonna save expense by separating the Recreation Department from the county, it was gonna be less expensive, and we wouldn't have to let $100,000 in the county put in, we wouldn't need it. That's what, that's the point I'm getting at.
Councilman Hagan, you have something?
Yeah, I found, I made a question on the COBEC, the $20,000 increase in the revenue line, our contract with Saint Vincent de Paul's, $10,000 per year?
Correct.
So where's the $20,000 come from?
This is for, to repair the building?
On the income side.
Grant, maybe?
There is a, there is a, what, a $3,000 grant that we're getting from?
There is. This is the transferred money in from the unrestricted reserves to put in the revenue line, and then we increase in expense line. So there is a revenue increase and an expense increase.
Okay, the decrease in the revenue line, $20,000, that increase in $20,000 is a transfer from unrestricted funds?
Correct.
It doesn't reflect any income from St. Vincent de Paul?
No, that won't, the moving date is April, so we'll have rent for April, April, May, June, and then next year's budget will actually show an income line, a revenue line for that.
Okay. And the $20,000 is transferred over, but we're getting a grant, is that on top of the $20,000, or is that part of the total?
Yes, the total cost is around $20,000.
Okay, so we're not gonna show that $3,000 revenue stream in this budget?
It wasn't, wait, after talking with Craig, he said that it hadn't been approved yet, so we'll show that until it actually was.
This, I have a similar question regarding the recreation. It was my understanding that we turned down the $100,000 from the county, from Fiscal Court, that there was gonna be a reduction in mowing costs, some contractors, fuel costs, those kind of things. I would like for this budget to reflect some of that. I know there was a discussion of somebody's gonna be retiring, when is that gonna happen?
He's gonna retire at the end of this month, 29. This Charlie Martin, he's in the maintenance, on maintenance, yeah.
And that is still in this budget? It will reflect that in, all this, the savings that we'll have, like the mowing, contracting, and all this is, will be reflected in the next budget.
But why isn't, why isn't there some in this budget?
Because he hasn't retired. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Most of what we spent at the county park was labor. So when we went back, and I think we discussed this before, we had a finance committee with this Councilman Williams and Hagan. Most of our expenses out there was labor, our staff, you know, my three maintenance men, and we even figured in my assistance and my labor, basically out there, and it came to around $100,000. And it came to around a hundred thousand dollars, actually a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars. When we figured fuel, it was about fifteen hundred dollars. We used our mowers out there and I really didn't know how to figure what our equipment was costing out there. So we did all that, we lined fields, we maintained the mowing at the soccer fields, but we didn't mow the rest of, the county contracted out for that. So we didn't really have any contractors out at the park. It was our staff, our labor. So that's what that hundred thousand dollars basically covered, that they paid us. So that's still in my budget unless we fire, all of us, or eliminate those positions, it's gonna be awfully hard for me to decrease our budget, a hundred thousand dollars. And yes, we, we will save on fuel costs and, you know, the equipment won't break down as quick because we won't be using it out there. But we've also taken on, you know, the farmer's market, for example, we take care of the Quebec building. We've been able to finish projects here where we couldn't before. We would prioritize that park, all of those ball fields for the youth leagues. And we were under the gun a lot, we neglected things here. So now we are able to concentrate more on city facilities, and one project we have upcoming is just to improve the community park into an amphitheater-like setting for our free concerts that we offer during the summer.
Yeah, Donna, I see, I get all that. Here's the thing.
Yeah.
When all this was being discussed early, whenever we saw, it was, it was explained to me that by virtue of us bringing our people back from Dean Watson's Park and doing this work, that we were going to be able to cancel some contractors that we were working, that was, that was, I heard that. Also, that we have this mowing contract that I presume we're not gonna be using a mowing of twenty-four thousand dollars for some places?
That's a city contract with one Oliver's that we can be taking over mowing.
Okay, so...
So that's not gonna reflect in this budget, I don't think.
Well, I don't see how it couldn't since the budget goes to July first, certainly there'll be mowing. And, and if a guy's gonna retire next month, it would seem to me that that labor from then till the end of this fiscal year would come out, would be a savings.
Yes, that's gonna be a savings.
So I would like to see those savings reflected in this, I...
Well, they can't until the end of the...
As I say, at the end of the year, you'll see where they'll probably come in under budget. And any money that they don't spend just gets pushed back into the reserves.
So, I'm, I'm officially... So you're telling me that there will be a reduction in costs, but we don't know what it is since it hasn't happened yet, you can't change the budget to reflect what you think it's gonna be?
Yeah, because Mr. Harden has been retiring for a little while, and so until it was official, we didn't want to work with those numbers. And then as far as the mowing contract, I'm not for sure when that Oliver was, Oliver's was up because I was, I think, and I please correct me if I'm wrong, it's a two-year contract.
It is.
Yes, of course, I'm pretty afraid so, I'm not gonna ask my question.
So the hundred thousand, we have, okay. I guess I...
The termination happened after you all approved the budget from last year.
Certainly.
So it didn't happen until July?
So we won't know, we won't know the actual impact until the end of this fiscal year, then we'll redo this budget and reduce the expenses by some, some number, something greater than zero. That's a question.
Oh, definitely, well, I think...
We're probably around, right now with what we can do, just about seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, I've got it at seventy-five, one seventy-four. That's with Mr. Harden's salary and a twenty-four thousand dollar mowing contract.
Okay, I'm done.
That may issue question. Total budget, I think, what, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars? Total recreation budget is three six...
Now, the parks and recreation and pool is also five hundred, it hit four hundred.
Call, I have another question, could you look it up, Tracy? Call, I have another question, I asked you why you're here. I think it was three, four hundred thousand?
And just the parks, it's three hundred and twenty thousand, and then you have the pool and the mowing.
What's your final major question?
But what you have to keep in mind here is that the hundred thousand dollars that we were getting from the county, and I, and I looked at the numbers and I think it's what we spent was in excess of maybe five to six thousand, so a total of about a hundred and five to six thousand dollars that we were spending, but they were spending their whole time out there. And I don't think you have a grasp of what was needed here. And it, you'll have to wait till the next budget when she comes out with the numbers to show and reflect that, but go ahead.
Okay, fine, Tracy.
The rec expense budget is...
I mean, the total, total budget, a gross in that. I mean, well, I don't get no gross in that.
Well, no, they're...
You just want the bottom line figure.
You want their bottom line expense figure?
Yeah, that total budget, right. And that will be here today.
Okay, with the pool, it's five hundred and fifty-six thousand for expenses.
So you still have two months before the budget, found budget end. Would you need a hundred thousand dollars because you still have questions? If you, you have four hundred thousand dollars in your budget, since the county, the separation, you take a hundred thousand, so you got four hundred thousand. So you should have four hundred, I mean, four hundred thousand dollars should be enough to carry you through the fiscal year without an extra hundred thousand dollars, right?
Not really.
Not really?
Or...
You understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But what I'm trying to tell you is that most of our expenses out at the county park covered our labor, which we still have, we still have that staff.
Right.
Now, Charlie Harden will retire at the end of February, so four months of his salary and benefits will cut into that, you know, will decrease by that much, however much that winds up being.
Right.
But that's, and I can reduce, I'll, I'll have reduced fuel costs. Yes, there will be some areas where we can reduce.
Right.
But the bulk of that hundred thousand dollars really went toward our staff, which we still have, you know, so that's, they figure the salary and the fringe benefits for our five staff people. So that's, that's what was spent out there mostly was our labor. You understand? I mean, you know, we use our equipment and we mow your soccer fields and then we maintain the rest of the fields.
It's just separate, it's just created.
It's not supplies that we were using.
Using, what I see it, you know, but...
Well, it's, it's just that we didn't use supplies out there, like, you know, the line items, five thirty-two, it's not like we used ten thousand dollars worth of supplies out there. It came, the expenses were our labor, the fringe benefit, all the fringe benefits, unemployment, retirement, salary, all that. That's what we figured cost us out of that park, that's what we mostly used, except for the fuel and our equipment. Otherwise, it was, you know, it was daily stuff, picking up trash, fixing the fields and stuff like that. So that's what I'm trying to...
I'm sorry. So that hundred thousand dollars we're referencing...
It kinda covers...
Actually offset, offset some of the...
It offset what we...
They weren't, they weren't paying, the county wasn't paying nothing towards the recreation park, they just paying for y'all's salary to go out there and work for them.
No, basically they gave us a hundred thousand dollars, they didn't care what it was used for.
But they paid y'all's salary while y'all were out there working.
Yes, yes, yes.
And we had to pay other people to do the work here in city while y'all were out there working for them.
No, we still did all the work, we still tried to do that.
Well, you weren't getting it done, but now you're getting it done.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we're not under the gun. You know, now we will have enough, we will have time and not be under so much pressure to get the pool open and not wait to the very last day to get everything done so we can be inspected.
I think what Councilwoman Martin was saying, the hundred thousand dollars that was given by the county to the city, that hundred thousand dollars was eat up in labor to attend and to, to attend and groom the Dean Watson's field. We, they, then they still had to continue to do the work for the city of which the county did not give any money to, to help, to help the Recreation Department on the city side, of which county people attended also.
But when you received that hundred thousand dollars, it came in the budget and it's no stipulation in there how you used it. So really, I mean, if you have opinion on something, it's very misleading because that hundred thousand dollars is once right in the, right in the budget.
It was in the revenue.
Right, and it wasn't no stipulation in there how you use it.
No.
Okay.
It was supposed to be used for recreation.
Right, you use it for, some for the city, could be, right.
Which all of our lawyers...
Right, I mean, you can't, I know, because it's misleading opinion and comments, I'm just indicating, so, okay, that's correct then.
Okay. Are we ready to go?
You don't have to vote, it's first reading, you don't have to vote on that, you, if you want to take a, since the temperature of the room vote, you can do that, but it's not binding.
Now we're just, now we've spent enough time on that, let's continue on. Let's go to, reports of staff.
No, classification compensation.
No, I'm sorry. B, two thousand and sixteen classification compensation plan amendments.
Mayor, I would like to introduce proposal ordinance B, two thousand and sixteen classification compensation plan and ask for summary to be read.
Summary of ordinance B, two thousand and sixteen classification and compensation plan. This ordinance amends ordinance B, two thousand and fifteen dash sixteen and chapter thirty-five employment policies, the classification plan and compensation plan by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade for a new part-time position as a media specialist for the electric and cable TV department for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen dash sixteen and subsequent years. The amendments and additions reflecting number of positions, title and pay grade respectively are add one media specialist, part-time, pay grade one oh nine. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, city attorney.
Okay, it's first reading, we don't need to blow them out. So let's move on to cemetery committee meeting that was held on two seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, the minutes. Councilman Simpson, you have the floor?
Well, we had quite a bit of discussion, nothing to bring back at this time on, on what we discussed. We had one of the, Roxanne King came and gave us some information on sizes of footers and sizes of tinsel and things, but far as coming up with anything concrete on that, I don't think we did, didn't we, Fred?
Well, we, we, we said, man, we have some recommendations, it's ready to put into ordinance, just whatever happened with the team. It was a good discussion. I learned a lot.
And anything, if they go with need, they had to, Francis?
No, I think we covered it.
I think, Councilman.
I do want to mention that we talked about the financial, I, I've asked some questions, I've asked these before and I keep asking them about what, where we're investing our money and do we have it in the right place, and Barbie has been looking into that and Tim, she and I were just talking about that before the meeting, so just trying to see if we could get a little more return on our, on our money and understanding the restrictions on the, on the trust fund and those, it's not as simple as I, as I thought, and I found out tonight, but anyway, that, that discussion is just taking place.
We did, all the reports, I think Barbie reported that our reports have been made and we are, for this case, for cemetery, take care of it in the future, that's, I think that's kind of what Fred...
Yeah.
We'd like to make more money, I'd like to make more money back to sale, but it's just not there right now, but we're looking into it.
There are restrictions.
Okay. Well, there'll be, Ms. Jane Thompson, it's your time.
I have Dave Maddie here with me, he's the development review board chairman. We've been working on trying to streamline processes through the planning commission and one of the things is the development review board, which is the commercial establishments' design standards ordinance that the city of Bardstown and Nelson County fiscal court adopted several years ago. That process requires any new commercial establishment to come through the design standards approval process. Right now, that process is taking anywhere from three to four weeks to get through the process. By the time they submit their site landscaping, lighting and landscaping plans to the office and we get it distributed to the development review board, I do a staff review, they meet, then a recommendation is made by the development review board and it comes to city council. So it takes three to four weeks for that new building to go through the process in addition to any land disturbance permit, grants reviews, all those things that have to be done. And we try to work with Jessica on trying to get that timeframe down to where they, within that month, everything is done. The thing that we've met or we've realized in the last couple of years is that our engineers that we're working with and surveyors know what the design standards are and they're able to come in now with, with projects that meet almost everyone or meet all of the design standards. So I'll do a review for the board and check off they've met this standard, they've met this standard, in most cases, they're meeting all the standards or there's issues that I can work out with them before the meeting. So we're calling the development review board together, asking the applicant to come to the meeting, the meeting's taking about five minutes because they've met all of the standards, then we're sending it to you all as a recommendation for approval and it's getting approved. So we're holding people up for, you know, three additional weeks, whereas tonight we're asking for you all to consider, of course, it'll have to come back in ordinance form, but to consider administrative review, which would be allowing the staff, the development review board chairman and the mayor or the judge, depending on which jurisdiction it's in, to do an in-house review with those three individuals. If they meet all of the standards, it would not have to go in front of the full development review board, nor would it have to go in front of the full council or fiscal court. So that would say, you know, probably if they submit on a Tuesday and we have, the staff has the time to do the review and then get with the development review board chairman and the mayor or the judge, we can have them in and out of our office in probably two days if all goes well. And so, you know, our local engineering firms and surveying firms know the standards very well. We don't have a, you know, we don't have large projects like we did with Walmart and Lowe's when I first started in two thousand and three, so a lot of them are smaller projects, but most of the projects are coming through with all of the standards. What this would do is if there are issues, then we would try to work those out to where they could get to meeting all of the standards. If there happened to be an issue that couldn't be resolved by the three members on administrative review committee, then it could go to the full board, for the full board to review and then, of course, come to, to city council or fiscal court. And then they would also have appeals process from there, so...
Is there, in some recent days, that you have, you have a company that must commit here and they, they're like, we, they have all their people lined up, ready to go, and I think this has been absolutely a good thing, it would cut that process in half. And it's all, and that's what we've always talked about, is public service and how we provide that service, and I think it's, I think it's a good thing. Most of those big companies that come in already have these, as she has said, these engineers and they have people that's already, staff that's already got all this worked out and fixed.
The one, the one question I have, and it's kind of a technical legal question, is that this is, if this is truly administrative review, and no disrespect to the mayor or the county judge, why would the mayor of the county judge be involved?
We asked for that so that it took the pressure off the staff and the D R B chairman so we at least had one legislative body member in that decision-making process.
And again, I know it's not down to the ordinance thing, but you, you talked about it being a committee. What, what happens if two out of three said it met it and the one said it didn't? And I don't care who was the one.
And then, I'm not sure if it's in there and I can look through that, but it would have to go through to the development review board.
It had to be an unanimous decision.
It would have to be a unanimous decision. And these are, if it meets all, that's why we had it, if they meet all, so typically what I do, Tim, is I work with it and I do, I do a staff report when we're ready to go and I'll list the items that they don't meet and we send them a copy of the staff report and probably ninety-nine percent of the time, they try to meet them before we even see the packets out.
Yeah, I, the only, with this being, and again, I hate to throw out some more technical terms, but this is ministerial review, not discretionary. In other words, you have to have six, you got six, you're entitled by law to approval. The only question that I, and I understand, by the way, part of me said, initially said, if it's, if it's administrative, it should just... if it's, if it's administrative, it should just be the director and go on with it. I do understand, like with David, a second set of eyes, some things might slip past you that you say, and you, and David might say, what about the landscaping over here? Ooh, I didn't notice that. A second set of eyes might be helpful. Um, I just, again, and no, no offense to the mayor or the county judge, but I, I think that that's, they're being inserted into a process that they are currently not in.
Until, until the time action. Well, they go, they vote, yeah.
Yeah, well, at least at this level, yeah, the mayor doesn't vote, so I, that would be my only, and I don't think, I think you can do it that way, I don't think it's, um, I, I just, I don't think that that would be, I don't think it would be necessary, um, practically for the mayor or the judge to be involved.
To just have the staff and.
That's.
Well, I, I have a comment on that, I don't think it, it puts a better face on it for the public that, just what Jan said, there's, that we're, that we, this body is somehow a part of it, we, we, we're, I don't know, I, I.
So you want.
I'm speaking for the mayor, I, I would like for the mayor and the judge to be part of that.
So then that way I can come back and give a report or any mayor.
Or it just, I don't know, it just acts like we, we know what's going on, they're not over there doing this and then saying this.
That's the other side of that, is that there is another set of, from the body, the ultimate approval authority, there is somebody represented there that is there saying that.
Although the mayor doesn't vote on that right now, but one of us doing it does, it just makes sense for the mayor.
Well, as a practical matter, the mayor brings these things before you as the presiding officer technically legally, but, um.
I'm okay with it.
But the other question is if, what if the judge can't sit up, sit in on it at that time, can he appoint?
Yeah, we, we talked about that adding or in or your designated.
They're designated.
Very good.
Yeah, I don't think about that.
If he be one of the engineers or.
Right, that, very good, that's, that's something that, you know, and I, I agree with, I agree with Brad that, I think it'd be nice to have that, that we can report back, but be, also let us be able to assign the designated, you said in our spotting case, the mayor or the judge has to.
Well, you have technical standards and, um, you know, I, the people that are appointed to the, the design review board, I think have some technical or practical background and Jan obviously has the background. Um, I think that right now, the current judge and the current mayor have some background, but that may not always be the case and so that would be my, but I, I think that, I think that Councilman Hagan is correct that, and I think Councilman Williams echoed that, that the, the perception is, is that there's still a level of involvement. Um, and I'm okay with that and I'm okay if it's, uh, if it's two to one, if it's not unanimous, it still goes up, I think that that's probably the right way to go, but, um, I just had a concern that it involved somebody that's not currently in their current position involved, so, um, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a fatal flaw.
Required training, is there required training?
No.
Uh, do you think that, uh, do you think that there should be some sort of required training like it is with planning zoning board members?
Uh, well, the, the planning commission, they need an eight-hour training every two years.
Something like that.
Um, I'm not sure, it wouldn't hurt.
I mean, of course, I mean, that's up to, that's up to you guys when you set it up and then it'll be up to these to, to approve it or whatever, but I, I don't know if, is it, is.
I mean, we can always include them in our training that we do.
Yeah.
It's not specific to design standards, we could do that anyway and typically what we do is like your view appointments and the board adjustments within perhaps twenty days, we do more than training, I typically do that with a, with a new DRB member anyway, the one over the design standards, staff reviews.
Can you make that, can you put that in there as a requirement?
You can put that in your work as a requirement.
I don't think.
Yeah.
I, I have a question, public, city attorney.
Yeah.
You know, you, you the attorney, we no attorney. The legal aspect of this, what is your recommendation? I know I, I listen what you indicated, but like I said, we no attorney, nobody, we don't have one attorney in this room. And what's your recommendation?
Well, I, I do believe that it should be, again, my initial, it is, I think it is good to have an expedited review for things.
Right.
You know, you've been an applicant on things and it's pretty frustrating to be the way. So, especially if you meet all the requirements and it's pretty clear. Um, I do agree that if there, and my first response was, you know, having been in Jan's position, you know, it's like, well, why do I need somebody else looking at this? But I think it is helpful that all of us are human beings and flawed and there are things that might slip by. Um, I don't think that it is, um, wrong to have the mayor or the county judge on there, but, um, I don't think it's necessary to have the mayor or the judge on there, legally necessary to have them on there. I can understand from the, from a practical point of view, from, from community, the, the thought of the community is that, yes, city council is still involved with this process through the mayor and the mayor can report and if there's some issue that he sees that you all are, are, you're strong proponents of maintaining the tree canopy and somebody's taking out all the trees, you might object and say, I think this needs to go through the full process. So there's still a level of involvement, I, so I don't, I don't, um, I don't have a strong recommendation one way or another, I just, you know, I, like I said, I don't think it's a necessity that the mayor be on there or the county judge and I, I would agree with the comments made that it might appear better to the public that, you know, there's still a level of involvement, that you all are still involved.
Jan, of course, what you're implying is that if one of the group had problems or wanted to make it go through, they could require, would that include the judge and/or the mayor?
Yes, they could ask for it.
That they could ask for it to go through the full process if they thought it was significant enough.
Right.
And Jan, I guarantee you that you would want that, that if you thought there was an issue, you would want it deferred so that you, it wouldn't be all on you.
Yes.
Yes.
We're, I mean, this is just a quick, you know, we just wanted to get with you on the concept of it before we actually started drafting.
And the only reason I raise this issue is that when you start getting into drafting, you gotta know.
I know.
You gotta know, because you don't have to debate that after it's been drafted in the first reading.
I agree with you, hundred percent.
Councilman Simpson, will you have an opinion? I just want to get y'all's consensus.
Well, we've talked about this thing.
For a while.
Numerous of times.
Fifteen years, I think.
Thirteen.
I think if we, if we can make it better for the thing to flow through, it's to everybody where, and I agree with Fred really that it does put, with the mayor and county judge in it, it does, uh, show involvement and as Larry said, they can make the recommendation, it goes all the way through, it goes all the way through. I, I think it's a good idea.
Councilman Butler, Butler?
Same here, Simpson.
Ron, we know how you feel, so. Yeah, I mean, it'll expedite the process and I think it'd also lower the frustration level.
You helped out a lot over the last year.
Councilman Hagan, Councilman Francis, Councilman Copeland?
I think it's a great idea.
It was received.
I didn't, what was that?
Chief did, it's great.
Oh, okay, very good.
Great.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the new staff, uh, looks like chief got called or something. Fire chief is at the, uh, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Ah.
Uh, I think, uh, police chief stepped out, I don't know if he got called or something. Fire chief is, we have a house full of recruits over there right now, volunteers, uh, they are very excited to be a part of something that is new and history-making, so I met with them not too long ago and they are excited and, and actually, when we had a fire on Simms Street, I think they had, uh, some, most of those recruits weren't even trained, showed up to wash the truck.
There was a bunch up there.
It was a bunch there.
I was there.
And, uh, and we actually, there, I don't, we didn't need any mutual aid, we had everybody there.
They had a piece of equipment there too.
Mm-hmm. And that goes with your ISO rating, you have to have that equipment there to do that, so, uh, I'm very impressed, so, uh, thank you. Uh, the Tracy?
I think it's budget time, so, it's just, whew, that's all I got to say.
They're working on it, give us time, they're working on it, so. Larry?
I'm sorry.
Ready?
Unless there's questions, uh, I will say Jessica's preparing tonight for a meeting of the Kentucky Stormwater Association tomorrow, she's going to give a, audio visual of our rubble dam project, so, uh, so people statewide, engineers statewide will be coming to Barstown, they're meeting at the city center, so, two thirds of the day, so that's a lot.
Okay, uh, no one else is here, all right? Uh, unfinished business, municipal order N 2016-1, just go pass on that.
Still on the books.
Still on the books, all right. Just got a new business, municipal order 2016-04, job descriptions, the municipal order, uh, has been withdrawn in that.
And the reason is because as you meant, as was mentioned before, the compensation and, and classification plan was pulled for second read, so we'll need to wait until the state retirement gets back with us before we can provide those new job descriptions.
I didn't quite get that.
Did you want her to repeat it?
Resolution.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, we have a resolution to present that authorizes the mayor of Barstown to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and April 1st as Green Dot Violence Prevention Day in the city of Barstown. I'm not going to read that one, thanks.
Okay, uh, this is a resolution.
I'm not sure what you said there.
All right. Turn that off.
I'll, I'll go ahead and repeat that if you want to. Resolution to, R 2016, like I said, is Green Dot Violence Prevention Day and it's going to be co-sponsored by Councilman Simpson and Councilman Copeland, so I entertain a motion regarding the resolution.
Some move. Please.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, second by Councilman Williams, discussion. Motion's on the floor to, uh, to approve the resolution of R 2016-02, the Green Dot Violence Prevention Day, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Okay. Reappointment, uh, reappointments is Terry Gohegan, the Nelson County Air Board, four-year term, it expired, uh, 2/21/2016. Uh, reappointment of Brenda Ford, Barstown Housing Authority, four-year term expires 2/12/2016.
Whatever they prefer.
You want to do them all at one time?
Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, B, the new appointment, Danny Reed, Barstown Board of Adjustments, four-year term expires 2/28/2018 and is to fill the unexpired term of Alma Jean Berba. No, I did not ask her to leave, just to let you know, she withdrew due to a conflict of interest that she has on her own and we have that letter in, uh, we have that letter at city hall. So.
If you need an appointment, Mayor, I make a, a motion to approve the, uh, reappointments and new appointments that you just read.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. Motion on the floor is to, uh, uh, reappointments in C of Terry Gohegan, Brenda Ford and Danny Reed, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Those opposed? Eyes, motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Was that yours? Uh, number 12, Councilman, uh, member of comments, we'll go to A, the National Preservation Advocacy Week to participate at the Kentucky, uh, delegate, Councilman Copeland?
Um, I had presented information at our last, um, council meeting and, uh, Craig sent a, Craig Pott sent a, um, letter to explain more about, uh, what it would entail and, um, I had asked that the council, uh, think about, um, using contingency funds to, um, let me attend this, um, event in Washington DC.
And I'm reading this, each year, a delegate from Kentucky step forward to participate. I support this because I think this is positive for this community and I would like to make a recommendation to the council that we have a contingent fund and we could use, I don't know for sure what it's, what you're going to need for the trip, we could use some of the contingent fund for Councilman Copeland for this invitation. Uh, council members, I know since I've been on the council, uh, there have been a council member funded by the city on some special occasion, so that's my recommendation.
Well, my thoughts are that the Kentucky, I, I was sharing this with Keisha, the Kentucky Heritage Council, it's part of the, uh, tourism, uh, board, tourism agency, so it's a state agency which promotes preservation and which, uh, it being a state agency, I think it's more appropriate for the, if the Kentucky Heritage Council wants to send delegates, I think it's more appropriate for them to, to fund that and I think if, if we, if the request was being made by someone other than a councilman, we would probably, I, I think feel, I don't think because of the, the request being made by councilmen should affect our decision for the city to pay for, I guess is what I'm saying. I applaud the effort, but I just, I think if it was, uh, it's a statewide effort, the, it's funded by the state of Kentucky, which is funded from our tax, taxes and if there is a tourist, tourism benefit to it, perhaps the tourism commission would want to, to, to carry that, but I just don't think it's appropriate for the, for the city council to pay for.
Councilman Copeland, do you have any idea of how much you're talking in terms of as far as its possible expenditures?
The, um, the main thing that I want to do is I'd just be at the Capitol Hill and that is two days. Um, I would be able to speak, um, to over two hundred and fifty people there and talk about my community, um, I'm not an expert in this and I might even pretend that I do, but my grandfather helped build this city and so I've taken, um, an extreme interest in the city of Barstown and the architecture and things of that nature. However, um, to be able to speak about our city and about upcoming projects that will be happening here in Barstown, um, that would be two days, so I, I wouldn't need to be there for the whole entire time, I would like to be, but I don't have to be. The registration would be two hundred dollars, um, the rooms that they suggest are 229 a night, I don't have to stay at that hotel, that's where they're doing everything, right there, you know, you get out of your bed and, uh, go downstairs and, and, and start with, uh, what they're doing, um, their sessions and things of that nature, but, um, I, I understand what, um, you're saying, Fred, I do understand. Um, I did speak with Don, um, with tourism and, and other people in the city, um, and they thought that, um, it, it was a good thing for not only, um, to be a representative of the Kentucky delegation, but also to be, um, showcasing Barstown. Um, so the room is 229, um, like I said, I wouldn't have to stay there, um, and then the, uh, registration, because it is now late, so you have to add twenty dollars, so it would be, uh, two hundred dollars. And the, um, the week is March 8th through the 10th, but the 8th is, um, like a registration session, it's from 3:00 to 5:00, so the actual, um, session starts on that Tuesday.
Well, personally, I think the tourist commission, uh, that if we're going to send, if somebody's going up there, they get the funds and, uh, I would think that someone in that capacity would be the one to go. That's where, that's where the, uh, money winds up, of course, I think we've gotten, what, uh, forty or fifty thousand dollars, the tourist commission has gotten forty or fifty thousand dollars through grants and things, through the Heritage Council, something in that neighborhood, but it looks to me like that, uh, that would be somebody that, that group should be the one to send somebody up there. one to send somebody up there.
Councilman Butler?
I'd concur with that. I mean, it's, it's the taxpayers' money, and it's just like Police Week, if you go, I pay my own way. I commend you if you do go, but not on taxpayers' dime.
Councilman Williams? Well, I think it's an honor that we have somebody that's selected as a delegate, and I understand everybody's position, but I wouldn't be opposed to giving some contingency money to offset the costs. I'm not opposed to that entirely.
Yes, you have to.
Well, I'll entertain a motion, I entertain a motion to, to approve Council, Councilman Copeland's, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we would know, we would need to know what the dollar amount was before we could even, I would think, before they give...
You probably should do it not to exceed, is what I would...
Because you don't have another time to meet before the meet, the actual event occurs.
Right. I think you'd have to just not to exceed.
So you have a dollar figure? $1,000? You have to get that, too. Yeah, I would tell you that. Okay, motion's on the floor by...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
What am I saying?
Boy, boy. You can, you gotta take those motions, that's on that thing.
Yeah, I would make a motion that Councilman Copeland would get $1,000 from the contingency fund, so she can go as a delegate, not to exceed $1,000, excuse me, to be this delegate at this National Preservation Advocacy Week. Second.
Is there discussion?
Just a minute, as soon as I call for it. Motion's on the floor by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Lydian. Discussion.
Yes. Did anyone read the letter that Craig Pott sent out? It was updated a little bit later today. Did anyone get a chance to read that letter?
It's on the iPad. It's on the iPad.
Did you guys get a chance to read that letter?
Which, which letter?
Craig Pott sent a letter.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay. And in it, it states that, "Over the last three years, Barstown has received nearly $50,000 through the federal certified local government grant program to carry out activities including historic site surveys, community education, outreach commission training, promotional video production, archaeological demonstration, and trade fairs. All of these activities have enhanced Barstown's heritage and its appeal as a historic destination."
More discussion? Yes. Yeah, for $1,000, I'd approve $1,000. I envision a much, much higher number. I think for, you eventually get to a number low enough that, you know, what the heck. I agree with all the good points we're talking about here. It may, I think it should be a tourism thing. I think tourism should be paid for, but if they're not, for a thousand bucks, I'm in.
One thing in that letter that kind of rubbed me a little wrong, even last time we discussed this, that it was indicated that you were appointed by so-and-so-and-so-and-so to sit on this committee, but the way I read this letter, it's a voluntary committee.
I had never, and I corrected, I think Councilman Williams contacted me, and I didn't say "appointed," because that wasn't correct. He had asked me to be, and that's exactly what I said, he had asked me to be a part of the Kentucky delegation, and that's as clear as I can get it. I mean, I sit down in a meeting with him right after the governor, and talking to him, and he stopped me, and he said, "Would you like to be part of the Kentucky delegation?" I didn't even know that there were delegates that went up there. So, you know, I was like flabbergasted, because I didn't even know that that happened. Only delegates I knew of were the ones that were looking at to vote right now, you know? So I didn't even know anything about that. So when Councilman Roland Williams called me, I corrected him on it. I said, "This is not an appointment, the appointment would come from a mayor. This is an executive director asking me to be part of the Kentucky delegation."
The only thing that, the only thing that I see, it just says, "It's expressed in your interest." We have a full-time preservation officer, which is Rochelle, everyone knows her. She has the experience, she's knowledgeable, she knows what that is, and, you know, it's, and I'm not saying that you can't, but if anybody goes as a delegate as a National Preservation Advocacy Week, that we have a young lady that is fully overqualified for the city of Barstown, and I'm glad she's here, and that is a person that should be going to this, in my opinion, to represent in a national preservation week. But this is up to the council.
Mayor, may I interject? I did speak, when you guys were in the meeting, when you guys came into our meeting with Rochelle, I did speak with Larry Green in reference to Rochelle going, because he did say that he wanted her to go as well, but Larry said that he did not think that it was in the budget for her to go, so I dropped it. But he did ask for her to go. But when I didn't hear anything back from Larry in reference to her going, I didn't proceed anymore.
Put him up. Just go ahead, and there's a motion on the floor. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay.
Four-two. Thank you, just move on. Okay, cemetery Ds. We have Tammy and Billy Ray, Noel, Shannon, Connor, Andrew, and Marion Blanton, and it's okay with unanimous consent. I'll approve, or, hell, I've just lost it.
Just read the word.
I'm just, I'm just lost it. Just read it, yeah. Okay, since there's no objection, motion approved of Ds by unanimous consent. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. There'll be a working session Tuesday, March 1st, 5:00 p.m. Please send your agenda and the items that you want on there, and if you have any questions, come in before the meeting, and let's get the answers in, extra like this. The answers are there, you just got to come in and get them. So if there's no objections, I'll, I'll, we'll adopt a motion about unanimous consent to end this meeting. I'm over it. I'm over it. Thank you.
We're done.